That isn't my title, but never mind.
Oh, right. All good. Where have they got that one from?
Oh, there's Bobby. She's here. Can we move up one?
Would we need Gareth? Do you mind moving that so Bobby can...
Catherine, just so you know, that isn't my title. Not that it matters, but I'm Assistant Director for Learning Disabilities, Autism and Mental Health.
Do you mind moving that so Bobby can... No. Bobby, come sit down here.
We're moving up one, aren't we?
I think...
Oh, she's sitting here.
I don't know. Where are you going to sit? Are you going to sit here or...
I don't mind. I'm really happy back here.
What a hell is this?
I'm really happy back here.
They're going to sway here. I don't know. I don't know where you're going.
Shall I sit here? Oh, you're sitting here?
Um, do you want to go behind you?
Sorry. Do you want to sit near your table?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. That's fine.
Are you Nicola?
Nick, yeah.
Meeting in Bury's and Ebbert Densel Night this morning, and it's just been a bit...
Hi. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We're running through minutes now. Sorry about that. Just trying to get the technology sorted out. But anyway, welcome to today's Suffolk County Council scrutiny meeting on the 9th of July 2025. I'm councillor Michael Ladd. I'll be chairing the meeting this morning. Just two or three things to introduce to start with. We have councillor Liz Harson, or we don't actually, but she has joined the committee on a permanent basis to replace Robert Everett. But unfortunately, she's had to send her apologies because she's away on holiday. As always, this meeting is being broadcast over the internet and a recording will be available online after the meeting. Members of the public and press may record, film, photograph or broadcast this meeting when the public and press are not lawfully excluded and in line with the council's published guidance. Please could I remind you to make certain that your mobile phones are switched off or on silent, please? And can I remind you also to speak clearly into the microphones and avoid placing things such as papers or IT equipment in front of the microphone as this will affect the same quality for the live broadcast. We are not expecting fire drill today. If in the event of alarm sounding, please leave the room following the fire exit signs. Okay, first item on the agenda this morning is election of a vice chairman. And could I have a nomination for the vice chairman for the 2526 municipal year, please? Yes, councillor Bird.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can I propose councillor Scarf for that position?
Thank you. Or I second that for that. Councillor Reader?
Yes, if I'd like to second that.
Okay, thank you. Can I just ask all those in favour of that, please? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you. Welcome councillor Scarf to your second spell. Agenda item two is public questions, and I have to confirm that there are no public questions this morning. Agenda item three is apologies for absence. As I've mentioned, councillor Harson is on holiday and she is substituted today by councillor David Goldsmith. And also councillor Keith Wellham, I believe, is away and is substituted today by councillor Andy Mellon. So welcome councillor Goldsmith and councillor Mellon. Agenda item four is declarations of interest and dispensations. Are there any for the record? No, thank you very much. Item five is just to confirm the minutes of the last meeting, which was held on the 29th of April 2025. Can I... Any changes to that? Any comments to make? If not, all... Okay, yeah, I'll sign them after the meeting then. Thank you very much for that. So item six is the substantive item this morning, which is a transition from children to adult services. Now, the objective for this meeting, as is in your papers, is to consider how the council supports children and young people and their families in the transition to adult services, focused on children who will be eligible for care and support under the Care Act as adults. Because this is a complex topic which sort of crosses two scrutinies, it also has been looked at to some degree, education and children's scrutiny. And we welcome this morning the chairman of that committee, councillor Keith Robinson, and the vice chairman councillor Ash Lever. Thank you for coming this morning, and I'll obviously bring you in on any questions that you want to ask during the session, if that's okay. Just to remind members that councillor James Reader and councillor Joe Mason also sit on the Education, Children's Services scrutiny committee. So we have got four members of that committee here this morning, which I think will be very helpful, because this is a topic which spreads across both of those committees. Right, we have a lot of witnesses here this morning, so thank you all for coming. I think probably the best thing to do is I'll ask you to introduce yourselves before we get into the presentation. So perhaps we could start at this end and that does test out the microphones as well. So, thank you.
Morning, everyone. Gareth Everton, Executive Director, Adult Social Care.
Morning, councillor Becky Hofensberger. I'm cabinet member for Adult Care.
Morning, Nick Roper, Assistant Director for Learning Disabilities, Autism and Mental Health.
Morning. My name's Gail Hancock. I was previously the interim Assistant Director for Transformation and Improvement within Children and Young People's Services between September and last week. And I'm now the interim Assistant Director with a lead for the Nought to Twenty-Five service. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Bobby Bennett, Cabinet Member for Children and Young People's Services.
Good morning, everybody. Sarah James-Meadmore, Executive Director for Children and Young People's Services.
Good morning, everyone. Mike McEveney, Assistant Director, Inclusion and Send.
Good morning, everybody. My card's not correct. I'm the interim Service Director for Education, Send and Inclusion, and my name's Sharon Doon.
Good morning. I'm Andy Yakub. I'm here for Healthwatch Suffolk.
Okay, thank you for that. Was the volume okay for you? Because there was a couple I couldn't quite hear. So I think we might just... Can we turn the volume up slightly? Yeah, okay. Let's go. It's important that we do hear what's being said. Okay, thank you all very much for that. So I understand councillor Hofensberger, you're going to introduce the item, and then we have a small presentation. We have got a copy, a hard copy of the slides for you, and you did have them, I think, a couple of days ago. So hopefully you've had a chance to look at those. But would you like to kick off, please, councillor Hofensberger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, members. And thank you for inviting us to scrutiny to discuss the important subject of transition from childrens to adult services. As you know, ASC volunteered to be one of the pilot sites for the CQC Assurance Assessments in the autumn of 2023. And the overall rating was good, which was awarded to us, but an area for further improvement was highlighted, and that was the transition of young people from children to adulthood. And we have been, we were aware of this, and we have been working on this. We know that any transition in young people's life journey is an important milestone. Any transition can be disruptive, but particularly between children's services to adult services. When a young child is experiencing significant changes during adolescence, as well as transitioning to their different support services. Transition, when done well, can mean that the needs of the young person are fully met, ensuring continuity of care without disruption, improved independence and confidence, better health and wellbeing outcomes, educational and vocational successes, and enhanced social inclusion, stronger family support, and putting them in the best position possible to achieve their full potential. We know that through the deep dive that we have completed from feedback from young people and their carers and our partners, that we don't always get it 100% right, and we recognise that. There are areas which we need to do to improve, to work and work on. I'm hoping that in today's session will give you reassurance, you are self-aware, we are listening, we are working together, not just as CYP and ASC directorates, but with our other partners, to ensure that our young people experience, experiences when transitioning from children's to adult services, supports them in thriving and achieving the very best outcomes they deserve. Thank you. I'll now hand over to Gareth.
So I'll be brief. It's just a brief intro to the slide deck, and I'll be handing over to Nicola Roper and Gail Hancock to talk through things. So this report's an opportunity to consider the transitions of young people from children's to adult services. We're not trying to cover the entirety of preparing for adulthood. The cohort we're considering should be thought of as a subset of a subset of our young people, and this will be further explored within the presentation. This scrutiny will enable the committee to consider the support the council provides for the small number of young people with the most complex needs, their families and carers, before, during and after the transition into services that are available for those as adults under the Care Act. We'll cover what the council's statutory responsibilities for childrens and adults are and how this differs. We'll share some case studies to bring to life the different pathways. We'll share the plans for improvement in the area of transitions and how we work with partners and people with lived experience. So I'll hand over to colleagues to go through the slide deck. Thank you.
Thank you, Gareth. Just need the slide up. Lovely. Okay, thank you. So obviously, we won't go through our paper in absolute detail. I'm sure your, you know, questions will come up throughout the morning. But these were the questions we were asked and the questions that we've answered within the paper. We've also provided additional appendices and some case studies that actually show their real-life examples, obviously anonymised, that show our practice in reality and examples of how things are going. So if we just use these slides to ground us really before we get going, just touching on Gareth's point, who are we talking about today? Because it's really easy to get the two cohorts confused. Preparing for adulthood is much bigger. It's a national directive. It's embedded in legislation. It requires all systems around the country to prepare a model for Nought to Twenty-Five. And this is a large cohort. If you think about everybody in Suffolk, all the young people from Nought to Twenty-Five who have an EHCP, there is over 9,000 currently. And this isn't the group that we're talking about today. We're talking about a subset of this group. We're talking about those with the most complex needs. It's a small cohort of young people that, as we explained in the paper, about 400 referrals every year that come through into adult social care, some of which come from children's services, some of which come from other sources. But they have Care Act eligibility, so the most complex needs. And this was best sort of described, and I understood it best myself, through a friend and colleague actually who has two children. I've changed the names, but she has a daughter, we'll call her Molly, and a son will call him Joshua. Joshua is autistic, but he's quite high-functioning. He requires support at school, and he's supported a lot by his family and his network. However, he won't require support from adult social care later on through life. His sister, however, Molly, she has a profound learning disability, and she will require support. So there's a big difference here, but it's important for the purpose of today that we understand the cohort that we're talking about. And apologies for the size on the screen, but we just really wanted to go through the numbers here. So when it comes to EHCPs for 14 to 25, so that's the age range that we're referring to this morning. As of 2024, there were 4,927 young people with an EHCP. And again, this just shows the difference. Last year, we had 356 referrals into adult social care. It was actually double compared to the previous year. So it shows the cohort that's growing. And when we get into the detail this morning, we'll understand that the level of complexity is considerable for this group and an extraordinarily broad range of needs. Again, we'll go through that later. And also, just to make the point that children's services is responsible for about half of those referrals, so there are other sources. And again, this just makes the point of what we're talking about today. There's other examples there of transitions, and the language is quite confusing in this space. So transitions applies to any transition that a child or young person has throughout their childhood. So when they move from nursery to primary, that's a transition. When they move from primary to secondary, that's a massive transition for them. Equally, moving from children's into adult social care is the transition we're talking about today. So just to refer to a workshop that Sharon and I attended actually last week, it was a regional workshop run by ADAS, bringing together systems from around the region. And Empower, the consultancy, were at the workshop. It was really interesting, and it showed how much we have in common in addressing this important area and making sure that it's an area of improvement for us. And the thing that came up again and again was, is the service, is it good enough for our own children? If it isn't, then we need to make it so. We were all reminded of our statutory duty as corporate parents, and this is the context for all of us when children transfer into adults. Another important point was, it's obvious when you say it, but harm, trauma and human development doesn't stop at 18. There's no automatic sort of switch on the wall. People are people, and they bring, they bring forward their own experiences through their life. And sometimes the young people we work with have incredibly complex needs and extraordinary backgrounds, and we have to remember that. And I put this one in just to acknowledge that for some parents, this doesn't feel like preparing for adulthood. It feels like preparing for battle, and we want to stop that. It shouldn't feel like that. And parents tell us, parents and families tell us again and again, that it can feel like a battle. We need to do what we can to support them and not battle with them. And just some interesting statistics that Empower shared with us. National reflections on preparing for adulthood. It was about roughly 30% increases in EHCPs, need for formal care and spend. So nationally, it's an area under pressure and a growing area. Obvious challenging needs, risk, complexity, also the increase in neurodivergence, lack of established pathways and accommodation options. These are all national trends. Also, interestingly, transitions into adult social care is moving up the political agenda everywhere, which is really good, but obviously equally challenging as there's more scrutiny. And a real tension between short-term and long-term solutions. It's progression that we need to offer first and foremost, and not always long-term solutions. And finally, a really interesting point was that everywhere has relied overly on anecdotes rather than real evidence about what's happening on the ground. So it's very easy to say, isn't it, oh, there's a lack of employment, or, oh, we need to see people earlier. What the consultancy were saying was actually, you need to get under the surface of what's happening in your system and use real evidence, and then put a plan together to put it right. So that's what we've been doing in Suffolk. And we have started by building on the good work that we've done already through the creation of a transitions team, which wasn't that long ago. But we recently, Gail and I worked together to put together a workshop, so that's staff from across children's and adults. And we did an in-depth deep dive audit into 50 young people transitioning from children's to adults. And we looked at them from the point of their first care act assessment, so close to their 18th birthday, and that is, we'll come to that, because that's an issue in itself, but tracking back to the age 14. And we found that 56% did actually, they had actually reached their optimal outcome. There was evidence of really great practice and really good outcomes for that young person. But obviously, this does mean that 44%, we could have improved their journey and final outcome. 90% had an EHCP. There was a significant proportion of care leavers. And like I said, there was a huge variety and broad spectrum of needs. So some young people, you know, there was one in particular who'd written a book, but equally struggled to manage budget and meal planning. Someone else who was a talented singer, but needed various help, and, you know, her mum was at her wits' end. So a real mix of complexity, talent, risk and vulnerability. Where it worked well and practice was good, lives were transformed, and it was a joy to read the person's record. Where it didn't work so well, there was, there were some clear trends. And I've listed some of those trends, but it's not an exhaustive list. But you can see some of them. There's things like, you know, earlier planning, so we need to see young people from an earlier age and not the year of their 18th birthday, better information sharing, mental capacity assessments earlier on, you know, better mental health support. So there's a range of things there that I'm sure we'll touch on this morning. There's some quick wins that we can get on with, but there's also things that will require more strategic planning and complete operational join-up between, you know, childrens and adults. So the next step is for us to put a plan together once we've done the design phase, which needs to be done very carefully. It's easy, isn't it, to sort of say, oh, this is the findings, this is what we're going to do about it. But we're talking here about unpicking years' worth of, you know, work. So that's the plan.
Okay, thank you very much indeed. Just before I open it up to questions from members, I want to bring Andy in if I can, because I think Healthwatch done a bit of work on this, Andy, probably albeit sort of three years ago. But do you want to make any comments at this sort of stage?
Thank you, Chair. I note that in the scrutiny committee papers, there's a reference to the work that you've just mentioned. If I can expand on that, if that's all right. Thank you. So just, actually, in response to what I've just heard from Nick Roper, it's really good to hear that Nick described how this feels for families at that time of their lives and for the young people. And one example that Nick's just mentioned about the deep dive discoveries about needing to assess at an earlier age is something that was raised when we were talking to people a few years back. The reason we did this work in 2022 was it was one of the themes that arose from our general engagement work and feedback, and what we used to do at that time was use a little bit of NHS money and time by having an engagement officer available to do deep, not deep dives, but snapshots. And this was a snapshot. We submitted this along with a long list of other reports to CQC in advance of the pilot inspection, and this was one of two reports that was picked up by them. And in their response to their inspection, which yes, absolutely recognised, considered adult social care as being good, which is good, they did pick up that staff reflected some of the similar feelings to those that were reflected by the families that we spoke to. So if I talk about a few of the things that were raised with us, I won't go through a PowerPoint, but I'll refer to it. Eight people, eight family members responded to our call from across the whole county, and it was an open call, basically. Have you had recent experiences of you having a young person going through a transition process at that time? And one was a professional who responded as well. All were anonymised. Five were about social care, three about mental health, two about hospitals and one about ADHD services. The professional person that spoke to us said that normally communications between childcare service and adult care services are good, but recent issues have arisen where there was insufficient or rushed preparation in life skills, such as cleanliness, budgeting, social interaction, which would facilitate the transition. And it can result in already traumatised children being overwhelmed by the situation and unable to cope and... and unable to cope and can lead, despite support from professional colleagues, to antisocial behaviour, eviction, or homelessness. There is insufficient statutory support, in this person's opinion, talking therapies, medication, or knowledge about any diagnosis or issues that they may have. From one quote, the person was saying that the system isn't well-equipped. Responsibilities of adulthood for the individual is just too much. They don't understand how tenancy works, paying bills, engaging with onsite support. They feel overwhelmed. None of the respondents gave any positive experience, sadly. And as for those of you who know our work, we always look for open-ended questions. We don't seek anything specific. And if I talk about some of the specifics, or later the respondents commented that they had received little or no support. One said that they were told to refer six months before the eighteenth birthday of their young one. And after three and a half months beyond their eighteenth birthday, there was still nothing. Another one referred to COVID as being an issue at the time. As you can imagine, family member was admitted to an inpatient unit straight from hospital when they turned eighteen. So change from child in need to adult services never happened by chance. There was no response or a slow response from one person's experiences. They referred, well, they referred in January of that year and nine weeks later had a call to say they'd been put on the waiting list. Three respondents commented that difficulties they then encountered increased mental health issues. They were expected to handle the transfer to adult services themselves. They said that social services were excellent when family member was a child in need. But all that support was lost in their transition. They felt the child would be abandoned. There was insufficient information. I have looked online and I do know, I see that there is a webpage around transition. I didn't look at the time, so I'm not sure how long that's been there. There's a feeling that there is a gap between the end of the activities unlimited and social services starting. In the quote, they would say that they weren't told there would be a financial assessment until after the family member had started accessing services. So they were surprised by that. There were some issues for young people who became adults who had specific health needs, like cardiology, or autism, or anxiety. Nick's mentioned, referred to autism. This family member said that no one looked at the autism passport of their young one. But she was fortunate to get access at a hospital appointment by chance. There was a feeling that there was inaccurate or inappropriate advice in treatment, leading to additional stress and anxiety. So this individual young person called Dee was told by a nurse that they could choose to refuse any medication and support as they were an adult at that point. It felt to the individual, to the family member, that the nurse was seeking to strike off the individual from their list. There was a challenge around legality and accuracy of a refusal to carry out an adulthood care assessment. So in this one example, social services had said to the individual family member that the young person who was seventeen and a half should wait. This was something that Nick's mentioned in her piece about earlier assessments. Overall, this was, like I said, a snapshot across health and social care. There was generally a lack of information, effective communication, and no continued continuity. As a recommendation at the time, we would have said that the NHS and social care services, children's services, and accommodation providers need to work more closely together. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Are there any plans for Health Watch to do another survey at any point? Bearing in mind that was three years ago.
As I said, it was a snapshot. And other snapshots that we'd conducted then and in the past have sometimes led to more in-depth work. We had hope for that, but there was no sort of traction for that and no call. Where we have done that in the past led to quite major pieces around home care, which was repeated last year and into this year, and also care homes back in nineteen, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. So it has happened in the past, but it hasn't happened around this subject.
Okay, good, thank you very much. So I'm going to open it up to members now, I've already got two. I've got several now coming, but you keep your hands up for a second. Okay, I think I've got, that's almost everyone in the front row. And councillor Mason, but the first two was councillor Breachman and councillor Scarf.
Hi, looking at the deep dive and the information from that, fifty-six percent has reached optimal outcomes. Is there a national average or have we got any other information from other local authorities on where they are?
I think there's not a percentage. But obviously, as reflected at the conference, it's a challenge, it's a national challenge. And what's happening nationally is there's a real focus on preparing for adulthood. And those systems that have got it right, perhaps they're further ahead, they're sharing their good practice via organisations like ADAS and the Local Government Association, which I think is an indication that we're probably in a similar place.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, yeah, thank you. So I'll just read this out, councillor Chancy, councillor Fleming, councillor Goldsmith, councillor Bird, councillor Back, councillor Mason, councillor Reader, yeah, anyone else? Okay, so, yes?
Thank you, thank you, Chair. I would quite like to know what councillor Bennett thinks about the more up-to-date position. Because I do think twenty twenty-two is a little bit old hat and it's three years ago. And being on the corporate parenting board, I have, they don't correlate for me. There's something that's a bit out of sync, and I know that doesn't cover everything. So that's my first question for you. Also, how much, there was, someone said about the transition without interruption. I'd like to know how much does transition smoothly, even if it means there are so many complex needs that it's very, very difficult for them to achieve everything. But at least if we're trying to make it smooth, we're doing our very best. So for me, that's really important, how much is smooth and how much, that's not necessarily you, councillor Bennett. But, yeah, and how much is interrupted? And I'm really intrigued by the preparing for battle. What do they mean? Do they mean battle with us? Do they mean battle with life? Do they mean battle with authorities, with each other? That was, you know, a bit of clean language there might help for me to think of other questions. I'll do just that for now.
Thank you, councillor Chancy. I think with the corporate parenting board, that is a specific group of children. And whilst when we're looking at all children in Suffolk, there is a Venn diagram and many children fit into many boxes because they're individuals. I think a lot of the key themes are the same, you know, mental health, access to transport services, accommodation. They're the big areas that we talk about. And I'm interested again, like you, to understand this, the fight. And I wonder if it's just what more that we can do to help these young people on their journey so they don't feel that they have to fight the system, that the system is there supporting them. And I know that's a culture change that we're seeing in corporate parenting. But beyond that, with all the other children who don't sort of fall under that category, how we can, how we can support that? It's a work that needs to carry on.
Would you like me to come in about the preparing for battle?
Yes.
Yes, okay, yeah. So that was said at this conference and it was a reflection of what families and parents tell us. So what they mean is they've had to fight for everything. They feel it's been a fight. So from the moment, perhaps their child has received a diagnosis, but even before then, it's felt like a battle to perhaps achieve that. They're not talking specifically about social care or children's, adults. They're talking about full stop. That's sometimes how it feels for them. Perhaps they've had to fight for support in school. Perhaps they've had to fight for their child to have friendships. It's just an overarching feeling. That's what was shared.
Boy, we go on to the interruption part. That sounds to me like they feel everything's very reactive rather than proactive, that they're fighting for it because it's not happening automatically. Are we looking at that to make sure that we are doing everything we can so that they don't have to come chasing? At least if we're doing what we can, the other fights are perhaps out of our control.
I was at the same conference where the parents talked about preparing for fight. So, and we heard two mums talk about their experience both with adult children now. They also focused in on the difference between children's services and adult social care and also the localities around that, about once you turn eighteen, the legal framework around the families change and the decision-making systems changes. And there was a significant, I mean, a very powerful set of feedback around the transition from children's services structures, which have smaller case loads, to adult social care structures that have higher case loads and what that means. Understanding that there were issues around when a young person turns eighteen, their legal rights to make a decision, and I think some feedback from that in one of the case studies. So they talked about the preparation was what it meant for them as a parent and that change to having a young adult, particularly when they were thinking about independent living. And for instance, there was a really powerful example of a mum talking about the level of care that she's given her child, her son actually, for a period of time. And when they moved into independent living, making sure that that plan actually really met the needs of that young person for all the nuances and quirks that we all have as individuals. So she really talked about making sure that in that, leading up to that transition, in this example, throughout independent living, that we've really understood the lived experience, but the caring requirement. And it was quite powerful in one respect, Nick, wasn't it? Because she was talking about her care package was for her and what she'd always done. But when they actually worked through what that meant for that young person, she saw the quantum of the hours that would need to support that person, making sure the relationships were right. So it was very much around understanding how the next stage of the system works and having the time to work towards that rather than that happening quite quickly at seventeen, seventeen plus.
Yes, I'd like to, thank you. So one of the things that we were aware of anyway, but it came out strongly in the recent joint workshop, is about something that Nicola referred to earlier on. The importance of joint working and information sharing early on in the system and the process. So in a child's pathway at the age of fourteen, if they have an EHCP, which very many children, young people moving through from children's to adult care services will have. The review of their EHCP at fourteen is a really key point in the journey. And what we know from what we've looked at is that very seldomly do adult social care staff get invited to EHCP reviews at the age of fourteen. So that, in some respects, is a quick win, to know it and to address it. But it does start to identify much earlier on than when a young person is in their eighteenth year or coming up to their eighteenth birthday. So there's something about identification and then tracking together and conversing together. Because parents and carers know their sons and daughters really well. The other thing to consider is that for children and young people who are in council's care, so we are their corporate parents, we have pathway plans in the same way that we have an education, health, and care plan. You'll know from being on the corporate parenting board that there are pathway plans, which is again another opportunity to come together, adult services with children and young people's services, working with the young person, parents and carers, be that their birth mother and father or, for example, maybe a foster carer. But coming together, identifying, tracking, sharing information, not only between children and adults, but with the young person and their family, obviously, and any representatives that may have. There's usually a fairly well-developed network of other relevant stakeholders who know that child and young person and may well have known them for many years. So there's a great opportunity to tap into all of that. And it will, of course, if we're working better together, avoid something that we hear very often from young people and their parents, carers, and family members, is about repeating and telling their story over and over again. But of course, if you've got that core group who are already sharing the information and working together at a much earlier point, then we're reducing the need for that repetition. So there are things that CYPS can invite adult care service into. But also, children and young people's services have an opportunity at age sixteen to be really honing into the expertise of adult services regarding mental health act, capacity assessments, which, from a practice point of view, doesn't happen all of the time. And it perhaps should be something, not should, it ought to be something that we have higher on the agenda. Because the issue around capacity is very significant as a young person moves towards their eighteenth birthday. The earlier that, you know, one of the things that's been stated is the earlier that we begin to have these conversations, share information, start planning together, means we're on the front foot, not on the back foot. If you think about the depth and the breadth of need that Nicola was referring to earlier on, those types of needs aren't necessarily something that you just will be able to respond to off the peg. In terms of planning and developing sufficiency to meet particular needs, the lead-in time for that often is a number of years. Sometimes a young person's needs, as they become a young adult, are so bespoke and so particular that those needs, if we're thinking about accommodation or where they're going to live and who is going to help and support and care, that might be something that we need that lead-in time in order to get correct. It's not something that you can do within that young person's eighteenth year. So for all of those reasons, being on the front foot and planning early in those ways will allow us all to be better informed and better placed to do that. For all of the forty, whatever percent it was that we're not doing it so well for, it's great to hear that, I think it was fifty-six percent optimal outcomes, based on the evidence of those young people. But we also need to attend to those areas where we need to do a lot better. And that's the focus of the design work and the planning that's coming out of this most recent workshop experience.
Okay, thank you very much. I think we probably all agree with that. I think in terms of battle, that's an interesting word. It's a very strong, very emotive word, but I guess if that's how they feel, it's actually how they feel, isn't it? So it does sort of put some sharp focus on some of the issues there, I think, so. Okay, so I've got councillor Scarf, I did miss you, this is the first time round. So councillor Scarf and then councillor Fleming.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Chancy has sort of covered one of the questions. We have obviously this number of cases that are in the report and the Health Watch. And the two present strikingly different views on the system. I wonder perhaps if it was right that we could ask both our officers and Mr Yakub, why are they so drastically different? Is it a timing difference in terms of the report that you? Is it a timing difference in terms of the report that you did and what we've done since? Quite like to know your views on that. That would be the first question. The council operates two separate systems, A S E and C Y P. Is that a potential problem in terms of case management, in terms of sharing information between the two departments? I'd like to know, does the technology allow you to share the information in the way that you need to? Or are there gaps in the technology systems that mean the integration isn't as good as it should be? And the third question, given that the council, the integrated care board, and probably all of our partners involved with these young people are already under considerable pressure, what are the organisations doing to work smarter and meet that ever-increasing demand that we can see within the figures? Thank you.
There's three questions there. Who's going to pick up the first one?
So I'll go with the first point. I think you're right in terms of the timing. So the Health Watch report fed into our CQC inspection, so that was twenty-three. We had an action plan post-CQC, so a lot of that was closing the gap. So working around the transition team and putting more investment into there. So the case studies will show a more current position from our perspective around the changes we've put in place and the better experience for customers, rather than that kind of timestamp from twenty-twenty-two. But there might be other intelligence that kind of helps us to triangulate that.
Yeah, absolutely. I think the transitions into adult social care team was formed on the back of the report, which, you know, shows the power of the report and the fact that, you know, it was acknowledged and listened to. The transitions into adult social care team, I think, is a really important team because you've got dedicated skills and expertise around working with the young people in this group. It's not a cohort that I think you can just spread across lots of teams. And if you do that, individual practitioners will do their best. But as we've said previously, some young people have incredible levels of complexity and trauma and it requires a certain type of practitioner to work with this group of people, actually. You've got to have a real sort of passion for it. And so it's just not something that can be spread about. So the transitions into adult social care team was created. It's a small team. So now where we are on the back of the deep dives is to bring that team together with children's and for us to work much closer together. And you make a really good point about our systems, but they are sort of the same coin, maybe two sides of the same coin, if you see what I mean. And, you know, there's scope for us to address better information sharing. For example, we could look at the dedicated staff in this wider transitions team having access to both systems. So that we could look at them being co-located. And they're just two things that we could look at straight away. Working smarter, absolutely. That's the ethos of all of this work. But it has to be informed by real-time evidence, rather than, like Ada said, stop relying on what you think the problems are. Get under the surface, speak to people, find out what's going on and do something about it.
Is there a third one or has that all been answered for you? Andy, no comment tonight, or? Yeah.
Thank you for the question. I wouldn't know. Back in twenty-twenty-two, I hadn't realised there were about a hundred and forty people involved in that process. And there were eight that we spoke to. I'd like to think that the system would be different for those hundred and forty, where they go to go through again. One of the examples that I didn't quite mention very well was a family that wanted to start the process when their child was, had just turned sixteen, but they were turned away and told to come back when they were closer to eighteen. And I think, I'd like to think that that wouldn't happen now. So based on that, I'd like to think that it would be different. But we'd only discover that if you were to involve us, for example, to do a kind of deep dive again, but from an independent perspective, as we have done with home care. And the reason I'll mention home care is because it's actually much more positive experience than people would imagine, as we discovered, both from the public, the service user, and also from the professionals who work in care that we discovered in the last report. So I think it would be a pleasantly surprising, better picture, but it would need an independent view.
Okay, yeah. I've got councillor Fleming, then councillor Goldsmith.
Thank you, thank you very much. I just want to say that at first glance, it looks as if, actually, if you're looking at the statistics on page seventeen and in the paper, that those with EHCPs ages fourteen to twenty-five in twenty-twenty-four being almost five thousand and those referred to adult social care in twenty-five, twenty-six being three hundred and fifty-six. And you compare it to the previous year, twenty-three, there's a huge difference. I'm just wondering what's going on there. Why is twenty-four so different from twenty-three? I'd just like to look at that. I'd also like to understand these numbers a bit better because just reading the papers, it seems that the council's responsibility for young people up to the age of eighteen is fairly clear. But eighteen to twenty-five, there is sort of a residual statutory responsibility, as I understand it, from paragraph four, page sixteen. But it's not really clear what that, how that responsibility kind of integrates into the adult system. Presumably, that means some working together and some transitioning. So if you could explain that and how that actually works, it may be in here, but I just couldn't find it. And the other thing that I really wanted to sort of hone in on is the preparation for the transition into adulthood. What age does that start? Does it start at age fourteen? And obviously, you're dealing with a huge range of different children, different types of needs, different capabilities. So obviously, the job is very challenging. But, you know, obviously, early preparation has got to be so important. And when does that start and how does it progress? Thanks.
Okay, so in terms of the numbers, there is a big difference between twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-four, twenty-five, absolutely. But I actually think that's a good thing because, you know, a hundred and eighty-two young people being referred into adult social care in a year, I mean, for me, that feels, you know, a bit on the low side. So it's impossible to tell with these numbers. It's not an exact science. It's down to demand and demand ebbs and flows. You'll get a picture in children's where there's a peak one particular year and they're working with more young people with complex needs. And then perhaps the next year, you know, maybe not so much. But that's just how it is. It will be interesting to see our referral rates this year. I mean, I expect them to be, you know, at least as much, potentially a little bit more. The important thing is that we get to young people soon enough. So perhaps what's happening here is we are seeing people earlier than we were. It's possible before we had our transitions team and the work was spread across that maybe we were seeing young people, you know, potentially after their eighteenth birthday. So this is the kind of evidence that we need to get into and find out what's going on. But I would see it as a good thing. The important thing in this space is getting there earlier, doing as much proactive and preventative work that we can so things don't reach crisis point and these various cliff edges that families tell us about. There's also a thing about demand going up within children's services. We hear it a lot, don't we, in terms of the complexity, mental health needs, increased rates of neurodivergence? And that's all coming across into adult social care. So again, the importance of earlier planning and proactive work.
I'd just like to beg your pardon. Just like to build on Nick's response. I mean, in children's, we've seen a thirty percent increase over the requirements for EHCPs and applications for EHCPs over recent years. And that's set to continue. The ten thousand number is the entirety of the cohort that we have from age five onwards to twenty-five. And I agree with what Nicola has said, that the increasing referral rate means that we are beginning to capture those that have the most complex needs earlier. Since the transition teams have started at age fourteen, working towards adulthood, but we're also learning from that so that our transitions to adulthood can really begin at the earliest ages for children and young people so that we can easily and quickly identify any complex needs, intervene early. But if that intervention isn't as successful as we'd like, it means that they are flagged for priority support when we get to transitions.
An age when, you know, a children, let's say, age fourteen, when there's an awareness that this person is growing up. And, you know, I've known quite a few people with special needs. And some of them may be quite complex, but they also can be extremely bright people with high levels of ambition. And, you know, are we catering for those people as well? Are we preparing them?
That's a really good question and a really good comment. I think, given the demands on the system at the moment, that we are focusing on our most vulnerable. However, as part of the plan going forward, it will be for all children with all needs who have an EHCP from age fourteen. So what's the university pathway, you know, for young children who are, as you say, bright and high-functioning? And again, it gets down to the complexity of the individual child as the transition into adult. But we're hoping that with the transitions team working more closely with the statutory services team, that this will be able to be identified and resolved.
Okay, thank you. Oh, you have a couple more, yeah?
Thank you, Chair. And I think the question you asked was around the statutory responsibilities as well. So for our children in care and our care leavers, we have statutory responsibility until young people are twenty-five. However, we are family, so we would never, even after twenty-five, it's just a date. We would always, you know, pick up the phone, have a conversation, support, as any good family would. For our children who have an education, health and care plan, we also have a responsibility in children's until twenty-five. And if that young person is also on a pathway where they're supported by adult services, we share that responsibility. So the conversation here is really important, that we stay very close together. And Gareth and I do that, along with councillor Bennett and councillor Reed and Becky as well. So it's a relationship which is really important. And I think the conversation here today is underpinning that, particularly thinking about a naught to twenty-five approach. That's all of us recognising that actually it's not, it can't be that cliff edge. It's got to be a seamless transition, which is what we're working towards. I hope that helps.
Indeed.
Can I just come in on that following question, so just around the Care Act eligibility?
Come in and then Andy, yeah.
It's all right. So I think you're right in terms of the different frameworks. And the Care Act is a nationally prescribed set of eligibility. That's the same across the country. And from a child becoming eighteen versus an older person that's residing in residential care, it's the same test of eligibility that gives us their eligible needs or not. There's some flexibility around how we discharge our responsibility and meet those needs, but it's the same test across, which is why it's quite a smaller subset of the cohort that we're talking about that come through to children's services, from children's services. So applying the Care Act eligibility gets us to the point where we've got the three hundred and odd children that are then eligible for adult social care services in a subset of that wider support umbrella that the council provides for children going through that adulthood offer.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just come in on your point around some very talented young people? And I absolutely agree, and that came across so clearly when we did the deep dive. It was lovely, actually. And I'm just looking at the notes from that deep dive. You know, we came across people, young people, needed support with A, B and C, yes, but could speak another language, talented chess player, talented musician, had written a book. And this is the importance of strengths-based assessments and person-centred assessment work and practice with our practitioners. So the young person is a person, you know, they've had their whole life up until this point. And they have skills, they have strengths that we need to build on, rather than seeing everything as a sort of deficit model. So when we work really closely with children's, we can absolutely make sure that that's the golden thread from age fourteen.
Okay, yeah, certainly one size doesn't fit all, does it, in that situation? So thank you for that. We've come to you in the end, Andy.
Absolutely fine, thank you. Just again, from the parent's perspective, those who have children with educational care and health plans have been through choppy waters, it's true to say. I'm a parent of a young lad who is going to be eighteen soon, not going to be going into, needing to seek adult social care. But what I meant to say was that there's a familiarity that's grown over a child's lifespan from the family's perspective with social care services. And it was interesting to hear earlier that caseloads are lighter at that point than they are when, as compared to adult social care. This familiarity is comforting for the parents, especially if you're adopting somebody, if you adopted somebody or you're a foster carer, which is really, really good and strong in the county. It's the unfamiliarity and the uncertainty of what's coming with adult social care and who's there to work with you and support you and your child as they become an adult. I think that's the real concern is because you're coming from a very comforting zone to something that's completely unknown, just to get that across.
Okay, thank you very much. Just before we bring in councillor Goldsmith, just while we're on that page, actually, it's on page eighteen, paragraph eleven. I see that the deadline for finalising the EHCP annual review process and paperwork and preparation of adulthood training materials is by late summer twenty-twenty-five, for implementation by autumn term twenty-twenty-five. Can you give us some confidence that these deadlines will be achieved? And when might parents expect to experience the new process or paperwork?
Thanks, yeah. It is well underway at the moment, following the deep dive process. The annual review process itself is at the final stages of finalisation following consultation with schools and parents. And we are hoping to pilot it from September to get an active feedback on how it runs and then roll it out from there across the county.
Councillor Goldsmith and then councillor Bird.
Thank you, Chair. My question actually has been answered by a response from Gail Hancock. And I'd like to thank you for such a comprehensive report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Straight into councillor Bird then.
Thank you, Chairman. Can I take you to paragraphs thirty-eight and forty-one of the report? Just picking up on the wording there, it's saying that in the past, feedback from your customers, your young people and their families has not always been at the heart of our thinking. And paragraph forty-one is using words like difficult experience, mixed experience, cliff edge. To be honest, sitting on scrutiny committees, I've lost count how many reports I've read where it says that our service has not been up to scratch in the past, but we're doing things to rectify it. Well, that's all very commendable. But whenever I read phrases like that, it begs the question, why wasn't it adequate in the past? I mean, I'd feel confident if the report said our service has been adequate and we're now trying to make it even better, fine. But it's saying it hasn't been adequate in the past and we're now trying to bring it up to scratch. So my question is, why has your services to young people and their families not been adequate? adequate in, in the past? I mean, it's particularly damning if you're saying that you haven't been locating feedback from your customers at the heart of your thinking. Whatever service you provide, if you're not listening to the feedback of the people that you provide that service to, how on earth can you ever have any hope of providing a good service?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you very much for your, your question. It's been very well documented, our, our pathway and our journey for the last three or four years in particular, and we're really grateful for children's education scrutiny, who do take a really close look at our improvement journey and making sure that we're on the right track for that delivery. We are, we are working alongside the DFE, NHSE, who are scrutinising us continuously around our pathways, particularly for our young people who have education, health and care plans, but also send support and also thinking about our children who need safeguarding and children in care. So it's very well documented, we are externally inspected in that space and also we were given really rigorous scrutiny as well by our own scrutiny committee. So very happy to have that conversation further with you if you would want to do that.
Does that answer your question?
Well, no, it doesn't. You said we're, we're scrutinised. My, my question is, why has our service not been up to the mark that it should have been in the past? I mean, we're, we're not brand new, this council's been here since 1974. You've, you've had these responsibilities for transition into adulthood until, since 2014, which is 11 years ago. But I'm reading a report saying that you haven't been putting feedback from your customers at the heart of what you do. Our, our customers have been having mixed experience, difficult experiences. So you haven't answered my question, why has it been not up to the mark in the past?
So I think, I think there is something around the national eligibility criteria under the Care Act. So in some situations, we will undertake that assessment and determine somebody isn't eligible for ongoing care and support. So around that transitions, we're talking about 18-year-old adults and testing that eligibility. And it might be a case that the parents and families don't agree with the outcome and they feel there is some eligible needs. And that's where we might get into those experiences where people feel there's a cliff edge that we're stepping away. But we, we can't get away from the fact that we have a relatively tight national eligibility criteria that drives that need for ongoing long-term care and support services. I think that's where we get from the 4,000 to the, the 300 that kind of come through. And there will always be some people that will have an expectation around the role of the state in terms of stepping into that, some of that gap. Just to kind of specify around our co-production activities, so we are in the process of, of launching a new co-production framework in adult social care that will really embed customer feedback in helping us to design our services going forward. In the interim, we're working with agencies like Ace Anglia, like Suffolk User Forum to help us to get the voice of customers into our service design. So when we're looking at the adult social care transition pathway, getting the customer voice to help us to improve that and move that going forward. So there's kind of slightly two different issues there. There's around those who have ongoing eligible care and support needs and how do we involve those in helping us to redesign and improve services? But I think unfortunately, there will be some people that aren't eligible for services who feel they should be and will be dissatisfied with arrangements. And that's where we have the role of the local government ombudsman, we have our complaints procedures to kind of explore those and to really be assured that we aren't missing people who should be in receipt of services.
I think it's important when you are running a service over such a long period of time, you have new legislation that comes in, the service evolves and indeed people's expectations and relationship with that service evolves as well. So what was perhaps right for someone in 2014, when the Care Act came, came into place and our responsibilities came into place, might not be considered the same in 2025. So people's expectations change, the service change and we evolve. And what's important though, is that we learn from the evolving service. And that's why we're here today and that's why we are self-aware and that's why we continue our self-assessment and learning from experience. And the only way we can learn is from people's life journeys and their, and us cooperating and talking to them through, through their experiences. And, and that's how we evolve our practitioners.
Okay, thank you. I think what I'm hearing is that the world is changing, people are changing and we need to change with them. But I think what we need, the crux of this morning is that we need confidence that that change is happening and actually things are better now than they were two, three years ago. So I think we'll consider that as we go through. The next question is councillor Back and then councillor Mason.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Fleming has already referred to the exponential increase in total EHPCs by year, total referrals and referrals into ASC by year. What reasons do the panel attribute to those, to those vast increases? Because clearly, obviously, it's not just sort of natural, natural population increase, there are other factors involved. I wonder whether or not the panel have any views as to what is causing those, those vast increases, what underlying problems, and also what is being done to address those problems? Thank you.
So going back to the increases in referrals into adult social care, as, as we said, it might be a good thing, it might be that there's actually increased exposure around young people's rights, it might be that children's services are getting that referral, the right to referral right. It might be that we're, young people are being referred earlier than they were and that they were being referred way too late previously. I think having a dedicated transitions team means that there's better processes in place. So all these things can, you know, could contribute to the rise, but also, as we said before, demand going up in children's services, that's, you know, a real key factor. Post-COVID, post-COVID impact on mental health, you know, exactly.
Yeah, I think, I think we can triangulate with that, our, our service is getting better at identifying need for transition and so we're raising those referrals in a more appropriate way through the system so that we can track it. And I'd also like to suggest, as, as Nick has done, you know, the, the post-COVID era for young children transitioning into adulthood is, is very, very difficult, given that, you know, we, we've had our first or second cohort that didn't actually sit exams during that time, transition into adulthood as well. And the national structures to support those young people haven't quite yet borne fruit.
Okay, does that answer your question or?
Thank you, Chair, yeah. I mean, it, it does to an extent answer the question, but my question was really, what is causing children to actually get to that position in terms of mental health, et cetera, you know, before they actually go into ASC? You know, I'm thinking of possibly the influence of social media, you know, the fact that they're in front of computer monitors all day and every day, not engaging with their peers, they find it difficult then to communicate. What is being done to address those problems, to encourage kids to get off their tablets and their phones and to get out and kick a football around or whatever? Their mental health would be so much better. Thank you.
That's a huge subject. It's a really big subject. And, and, and I, and I think the causes with regards to mental health are, you know, they're down to the individual, but there are ways in which we can embrace the current climate with regards to IT in allowing people to, to, to address some of their mental health issues. So we must always see a pattern of behaviour as a cause for an issue. We might, we should embrace that to help them understand or, and, and deal with their mental health issues as well. So there, there are ways, if, if the way that a young person wants to communicate is on a chat group with their, with their friends, at least they're talking to their friends and they're talking about their mental health issues. They might not be on a football pitch kicking a, kicking a ball about, but it's about that communication, it's about tapping into how they communicate best. And, and, and we, sometimes we need to embrace whilst we might not have done it that way. That's the way that they communicate these days and we have to embrace that. But it's a huge subject and I think there's a whole new scrutiny subject by itself.
We might refer that over to education, children's scrutiny at some point. Did I say, did I say on the news last night, the county council are supporting a young person who's developed an app to support people, their mental health? I saw that online, the news last night. It's cool. Forget what it's called now.
It's been created by an individual and a young entrepreneur called Vivian Tanaka.
Yeah, the county councillor backing it, I think. So I thought that's quite, quite good, quite progressive. Okay, councillor Mason next, then councillor Reader. I did miss you, Andy, yeah, sorry.
To add really to what's been said, the families that are waiting or going through this process of the transition for their young ones are also on waiting lists for other things. I think this is the, this is the thing that causes the mental health and the stress is waiting, for example, if you're a young person, you could be aged in your mid-teens, early teens and you're believed to have, to be on the spectrum, you're applying for an assessment and believe it or not, you could be an adult by the time you get that assessment. And it's all those stresses that pile up together. So it's not just the, the one issue here that we're looking at, it's a multiple number of issues that are faced by the parents. And of course, education is difficult for the young ones as well if they have EHCPs. Mainstream schooling isn't the best thing for them, special schools may not be the best thing for them either. And there's a struggle, especially with the numbers that we're talking about nowadays. The transition team that's been created is probably the closest thing that I remember from when I used to work at the council back in the early 2000s, when we had social care and education, not children and people's services and adult social care services. And at the time, it was a bit, bit more joined up and probably why we didn't have the Care Act introduced until later. So I'm really welcome to transition team. The question really for me is, is there a data sharing agreement with health, for instance, so that they could work together far better? Because you mentioned earlier, I can't remember who it was, it may have been Nick, about the number of times families have to repeat their story. And if they don't have to do that, if the transition team is working with others together and they can do, and they can share their data, that makes it much smoother.
Okay, yep.
I mean, obviously, we share information with, with health colleagues all the time. I think that's almost the next stage of our development. We need to get our sort of ducks in a row in terms of children and, and adults and then take that forward with health colleagues and work out exactly how can we work in a more joined up way as a system as opposed to the transition into adult social care?
And on that, as part of that, the annual review invites all stakeholders and partners who are involved in that child or young person. So if it is health, if it is social care, if it is a transition to adults, these people should be around the table with the family, the young child and the school. The local area partnerships also responsible for delivering for children with additional needs. And obviously, that includes the ICBS, it includes parents and it also includes education settings, social care and, and education. And there is a data sharing agreement there, which, which we can speak with adults about expanding further.
Okay, thank you very much. I can remember talking about joined up thinking in the health service probably 10 years ago, things don't change, do they? Okay, councillor Mason next.
Thank you, Chair. I think an awful lot of points have already been covered. I'd like a little bit more information, if you can try and characterise for me, transition in terms of how many points of contact? So for example, it may be that younger people are getting more points of contact and when they reach 18, there are fewer points of contact. Can you try and characterise how much? It's not that they're not getting support, it's how frequent is that? Because of course, the bigger the intervals between points of contact potentially can make an individual, individual feel less supported, let's say. It was very interesting listening to a conversation, comments back from a child or, or parents regarding something that a nurse had said. My experience as a teacher over, over many years is when I'm teaching, there'll be some children that have heard every single word I've said and retained it. And there'll be some children that have retained nothing and I, you know, or they've taken a sentence and taken it out of context. And, and, and it's a very complex discussion. When we talk about mental health, of course, it's not a single thing, there's a whole spectrum of mental health and how it presents itself. And I'm, I'm just keen that our staff properly protecting themselves so that they're keeping clear logs of what is being communicated and those opportunities for misinterpretation are minimised. And finally, is there any social prescribing available? You know, what interactions do we have with, let's say, the GP services to encourage that element of social prescribing, of getting people out there, whether it's support with going to the gym or, or whatever? Is that built in? And my final thing is, in Haverhill, we've got this wonderful organisation called Leading Lives and there's also Realised Futures. How consistent is it being, are these services being promoted and how accessible are they across our county? Because of course, in more remote areas, accessing some services might be a challenge. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. In terms of the points of contact, I think it's a very, very good point because potentially there are many and varied points of contact through, through a child and young person's pathway towards transitions to adult social care. We tend within children and young people's services to operate a single point of contact approach where you have an allocated key worker. They could be a social worker, could be a personal advisor for a young person who is leaving here. But the importance is that that, that there are some rules of engagement that inform some principles around how we as professionals work well together and in partnership with parents and carers and ensure that we engage and communicate with children, young people and parents and carers in a way that's informed. So the idea of a key worker is that that single point of contact, whatever the professional discipline or background is, has the responsibility to coordinate, share information and work with coworkers. So there's one single point of contact that's the key worker, there could be very many others who are coworkers, not only within children and young people's services, but also within the council, with our relationship with adult social care colleagues, but also externally in terms of with schools and health provision. I mean, health, we know, is a very complex arena. And we could be talking about specialist health services, we might be talking about community health services, but the, the principle is the same, is that in order to avoid the experience of overwhelm, where a, a simple example that, that I certainly have had conversations with families about, is that when you have a child with complex needs, there's many people from within the professional network who have a role and a responsibility. When that works best, it's when the professional network is communicating well itself. So that a simple example of arranging a home visit, if there is not that communication amongst the professionals, you'll end up finding that the family are either supposed to be in different places at the same time because... the family are either supposed to be in different places at the same time because the appointment system has not been well coordinated. Or that one professional arrives at home for a home visit and actually there's two other professionals already there. So that's clearly practice that is not helpful. But it might be, and I know of examples where this has worked very well, is that we talk about teams around children and young people, but sometimes there's a version on the theme of that, which is about teams of professionals around the single point of contact. And that is a deliberate attempt and a planned way to avoid lots of different points of contact descending on a child or a young person or a family.
Do you mind if I just come back on that?
Of course.
Would you say that's embedded? Or this is still something that is developing within what we're trying to achieve in terms of having that kind of holistic shared understanding amongst professionals?
Having an allocated worker, for example, social worker, early help practitioner, professional advisor, I think that is very well embedded. I think, as with a number of things, there are probably a number of examples where it works fantastically well. And it's very well coordinated, communication is absolutely on point. And I'm sure there will be examples where that is not the case. But those are the principles that we must always aspire to. And when it's not right, we must be very willing and able to correct things. So that's important.
Just to come in on that point as well. I mean, I, I think we have to minimize almost, don't we? The burden of, of families and young people seeing all these multiple people. You know, if you think you'll have a set of professionals in children's and potentially you could have a set of professionals in adults and, you know, that whole thing around telling your story more than once, you're going to tell it, you know, way more than once. So I think that's another golden thread across our work. And again, by bringing the age of, in sort of our contact back to 14, you're working alongside each other rather than multiple conversations. There are various touchpoints that we need to absolutely, you know, get nailed so that EHCP review once a year with adult social care can take, participate in that EHCP review. And that's a, an obvious point of contact that will, that we should be, we should be attending. And, and there's other, there's other points as well. We just need to be there around the table at the key points in that person, that young person's life. And that again goes back to getting involved earlier.
Sorry Chair, I, I thank you for, thank you for your answer. I also asked about services like Realised Futures and Leading Lives and consistency across the county and how well those are promoted and how accessible they are. Thank you.
So Leading Lives and Realised Future, incredibly valuable services. If, if anything, as our offer grows and we mature by, you know, bringing together adult social care and children's in that space, and we, we're not just a small transitions team, we're a service. So too will the specialist offers, they'll have to grow as well. So offers around progression, helping young people manage daily living, budgeting, meal prep, et cetera. We need to make sure that we're keeping up with the demand. And if it means growing the offers, that's, that's what we'll have to do. We need to look at the services that are out there for this cohort of people and, you know, have we got the right things in place and the right scale?
Sorry Chair, there's just one other point, thank you. And that, that was about social prescribing. We're talking about mental health and, and getting people out there. Does your team have any role in accessing that?
So social prescribing, I think we, we could benefit from more often than we do. However, we do very much look at each person and their own individual needs. And if, if necessary, for example, we could offer a direct payment. So you, you mentioned gym membership. Absolutely, this is about the outcomes for the person and how best we get there, rather than a time and task package of care and support. You know, flexibility and that choice and control via a direct payment is, is, you know, BAU. And that's what we do every day.
I just want to come in on the Realised Futures and Leading Lives because I think, councillor Mason, I want to reassure you that that post-16, they are two of our key providers with regards to that learning life skills, that transition. And in fact, they are, that they have one of the biggest commissioning contracts in regards to our adult skills team as well. So going post, post-16 and moving up, they, we are heavily involved with them and they do a lot of work in the rural areas as well. That's really important with regards to accessibility. And people like the Green Light Trust and people like that do lots of good work and we work very closely with them in, in some of the areas where you wouldn't, which is not just about learning, getting qualifications in English or maths and such. So some of those outside, and they work very closely in the rural areas as well, some of those hard to reach areas.
Sarah Jane, yeah.
Thank you Chair, thank you for the question. Health scrutiny considered this as well on the first of July. And definitely something for children's, the Mix in Stone Market are doing some amazing work around social prescribing and we're all really interested to learn from the model that they're using. So, and I think that very much leans into the conversation that we're having. So more and more, it's a conversation that we're definitely having. But our young people are really keen to be helping us understand what actually works for them too. So the Mix definitely is one to, to watch what's going on there.
Thank you. I'd say you invite to pop out for 10 minutes, Sarah Jane, if that's okay? Just go out when you need to. Okay, councillor Mason, is that, okay, yeah. I'm just going to bring in councillor Reader, but after that, I'll, I've got councillor Tinsley, but I'll bring in councillor Robinson, councillor Lever, after councillor Reader, so.
Thank you very much, Chair. I have actually kind of three questions, but if I may, I'll ask them separately so we don't all get muddled. Gail Hancock, you very, very kindly and councillor Goldsmith recognised that really overview of the service, which was very good. This scrutiny has come out of ASC, not out of Children's Young, Young People Services. So try to look at it from that perspective, if I may. And you've talked, Gail, very much about partnership and parents and carers having an influence and, and trying to help with our young people moving into adulthood. But I know I've heard and others will have heard that there has been this argument that actually, well, the parent and carer may have some really very strong views on how that young person should live their lives and move into adulthood. And some parents will get it right and some will get it wrong, but let's assume that majority of them get it right. But what we hear is, well, that young person is now 18, they can make their own decisions, regardless how good or bad or indifferent they are. And some of those decisions that those young people are making, for whatever reason, and are really bad decisions. So what is success to you? Is it that the child is making that, or that the adult is making a decision for themselves? Or is it that they're making the right decision?
I mean, I was reflecting on this this morning when I was crossing the road and thinking, oh, can I meet that car or not? And I went, and, and there is that piece around, we all make, take risks all the time. And if anybody was to tell me what, whether it was a good decision or not, I think I'd push back on that. So a lot of our responsibilities around protecting the freedoms of adults in terms of their decision-making. And the Mental Capacity Act is very clear that we start from the premise that the person can make their own decisions and work backwards from that. And it's always decision specific. So testing whether the person might have the mental capacity to make that decision but not a different decision. And it's all around kind of the understanding of the risk and the comprehension of that and retention of that. So you, so you're right, the, the legal frame is such that if an adult has the ability to make that decision, then we have to respect that. And I, I think it's only right, I wouldn't expect anybody in the room to accept anything other than that for their own circumstances. But there is something we can do about making sure we present the information in the right way, in an accessible way that helps people to understand that and, and the consequences of making a bad decision. So I think there is something about the skill in our practitioners, having those conversations, being able to, to influence that. And involving family and carers where we can to help us to shape that decision. But, but ultimately, the, the law is the law in terms of that, that test and we, we can't act outside of that. I don't know, Nick, if you wanted to add anything else in?
No, I would just agree. I mean, you're right, the law is the law. However, if a young person, again, in the light of their trauma maybe, their trauma history is making some bad choices, obviously, we would do absolutely everything we can to support them. And it's about getting the, getting them the help they need. If there's, you know, substance misuse, et cetera, we would do everything we can to support those choices even though, you know, or to, to support the person, that's as much as I can say, you know. We're not miracle workers and we're working, as we said before, with some incredibly tricky situations. But we, you know, our staff are trained, they get ongoing training and it's about doing what we can to support that person.
And I think a lot of it's about the relationship you build up between the practitioner and the family and the, and, and the individual as well. And that is key because if you have that trust, trusting relationship, often those decisions that the individuals make are perhaps more informed and perhaps more, and you're able to have that honest conversation, whether it's the right path to go down.
Yeah, thank you for that. I knew it was a kind of a difficult question to answer, but I, and I respect the response you gave. But I think in some parents' eyes, that will be the battle because they think they know best for their children. And those of us who are very fortunate not to have children that need social care, we've guided them in many positions and avenues when actually was that the right decision to make as they go through? Which is your responsibility, which is very difficult with the law as it is, to be able to do it. Anyway, so if I may move on, because you're getting 56% of these right. That is really good because I suggest you know what you're doing. And I think what was on page 12, I think it is, or sorry, 18, where it says, what are the national concerns about the challenges? I would imagine any one of our officers, you know, at that level and yourselves could have written those because that's not rocket science, is it? And I imagine that the report that you are going, are producing that says in, in paragraph 35 about your deep dive and once the completed findings will be shared with the co-production and partners. I'm sure none of that that's coming out of there is going to be a surprise to anybody, all the things that we've heard today. So we then come to the numbers that are on page 17. And as councillor Fleming talked about the numbers, from 23 to 24, we had an increase of 42 total referrals to ACS. 24 to 25, 174. And we've, you've talked about, you know, why that increase has, has gone up. But then when you go to the next line about the LDNA and mental health teams, if you look at those, out of the 42 that went up, 20 were under the category, as I've just mentioned. But in 23, 24, 165 out of the 174 were in that category. So it clearly shows the category of those young people have got those difficulties. So, and we've heard that with EHCPs, et cetera, you need partners around the table to be able to do that early valuation of a young person and you're looking at 14, I think that's absolutely right. And I'm sure we've been doing it for some time to go into adulthood. But an EHCP is Education Healthcare Plan. And I think the education bit, you work very, very hard and do the best you can. I'm very much concerned about the H and the C, or the H part of it. And with ICBs coming under more and more strain, and as Mike has mentioned, that, you know, they're an integral part, I'm really concerned going forward that how they can come to the table and help you do this. Because if this trajectory of numbers is consistent, and you said on page 23 that you put eight full-time staff into ACS to help with the increase in number, what is your strategy and what numbers are you going to increase next year to be able to help with the continuing trajectory? And I, I, I really hasten that, I just cannot see how the healthcare can play their full part. And I think it's down to you. So what is your sufficiency strategy for kind of sustainability to be able to make it work as I know you want it to?
I mean, that's, it's a hard question to answer, sort of simply, I would say. If we can get to see young people earlier, if our information, advice and guidance is better, so people can also get the advice they need and the information they need earlier on, these are all things that will help manage our demand. So it's possible that the trajectory won't just keep going up and up. And it's our role to manage that demand. And that was one of the purposes of the deep dive, to get under the surface and find out what is going wrong. And we're really pleased that the 56% were optimal. And you're right, it does show real promise and it gives us something to build on. But if our website was really, really clear so that you could just, you know, look at it, yes, I'm really clear what to do here, I'm really clear where to go, I'm really clear how to help myself, but also I know that I need to speak to somebody, then they're the kind of things we need to put into place. In terms of expanding the size of the team, obviously, if, if the team is eight full-timers now and we want to bring the age forward to 14, we're going to have to do something about that. But that's about us working together, sitting down and working out, how do we do it? You know, resources are tight, we've got to do things smarter so that we can manage demand, but at the same time, grow the team.
Just quickly come back on that, I know Becky wants to come in, but I think if I may suggest, we've got to have the number that you need to do the job. That isn't necessarily the number you're going to get because of budgets are just not there. But having an understanding of what you need to meet that demand, because otherwise you're continually trying to, to firefight. And you're getting 56% right? I'm sure you could get the other, another 40% of that right if that resource was there.
So I think you're right. I think there's a voice in the room that's missing today and that's health. And because we talk about partnership, but if they're not part of the conversation here, it's hard for them to say what their part in the partnership working is and we, we can talk about how we work. And we are, we are lucky, we do work very closely with our health colleagues. But they are under a huge amount of pressure, as are, are resources, as, as they are, and there's a big shake-up. And a lot of people don't know where they're going to be, what they're going to be doing or how they're going to be doing it in, in the future. But, but you could say that's, that's life because there's lots of changes that come in. I want to touch on referrals actually, because not all referrals require, will mean ongoing or indeed lifelong support for that individual. I mean, ideally, what we would want, and it's, it's not going to be possible for everyone because their needs are so complex, they will need lifelong support, is that we want to optimise that person, build on their strengths and they go off and they need minimal support from the services going forward. It's about promoting their independence, making them strong enough. We accept there are circumstances where that will never be the case because of the complex needs of that individual. But what, I think what's important is, is that we have that, they are, they know that there's an ongoing... But I think what's important is that we have that, they know that there's an ongoing relationship there if we are needed. But as Nick said, it's about building that individual, building their strengths, so they can then thrive without any intervention in the conventional sense of the word from statutory services.
Okay, Mike?
Yeah, that's absolutely right. We would subscribe to that from children's as well. Within inclusion and SEND, we're also working with education partners and other partners on what we call a graduated response, which is identifying early need from the earliest of ages and intervening quickly to try and reduce demand as it increases. However, as Becky has said, you know, and tying into the pathways that I mentioned, councillor Fleming, earlier, not every referral needs constant, ongoing support and attention. But our post-16, or rather, our annual review transitions team are obviously working in ever more closer union with adults, and that's a resource that we could maybe think about combining going forward.
Okay, thank you for that. Seamlessly, I think, brings us into education children's services scrutiny, so I'm going to hand over to, well, not hand over, but ask councillor Robinson as chair and councillor Lever as vice chair to comment or ask questions.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. I'd like to make a comment, which has got an inferred question in it. I've heard a lot, I'm always impressed by your teams and the work that you do, I've heard a lot about the futures of families and engagement. What concerns me more is engagement with the young people themselves. What do they want? What are their aspirations? Now, particularly amongst potentially neurodiverse people, there's some extremely bright people in there, they need encouraging to reach their potential. So I've seen, and I've talked to children or young adults that are perfectly nice people, no problems with them, but they seem to have a total lack of ambition, they come out of care, they're just going to let that happen to them. You know, I'm 18, I'll get a flat, that's it, you know. What is being done to encourage them to reach out for their aspirations? Not their mothers, not their fathers, not the carers, their aspirations. Sorry, thank you.
Yeah, I think particularly, I remember around last month, some years ago, there was a survey done about the very low aspiration of young people leaving school and college. So, yes, councillor Bennett.
If I may, councillor Robinson, I just want to challenge you slightly on that. We have, we're responsible for 148,000 children across Suffolk. Some of those are children in care, and some of those are the most inspirational, passionate, driven children I've ever met. So I hope you don't mind me just pushing back as a corporate parent slightly to say, yeah, I do know children who struggle to find their way, they're not necessarily children in care, they're not necessarily children from very affluent backgrounds, but some children and young people struggle more than others, so I just want to say that. But coming back to your main point about child voice and how we hear that young person voice, and I think that's something that certainly we in CYP, you know, hold as that thread throughout what we do, from, you know, as early as we can capture that information, whether it's on a strategic basis, whether it's on a personal basis, and we're always looking at ways that we can strengthen that. I'll hand over to Becky on how that continues into adulthood, but it's certainly one of the key themes, that when the local government association came in to look at our work, how we heard that voice, how we continue to not just hear it, but, you know, act on it and get impact because of it.
So people at heart care, person-centered care is not just a phrase, it's embedded in the system, it's embedded in the way that we communicate and the way that we support our young people, and indeed our adults as they move forward. So it is about the individual, and it's about the practice of a strength base, as Nick has already mentioned, practice, what are your strengths, what do you want to do? We ask those questions, and it's important that you ask those questions. It's not about what we can do for you, it's what you want to do, and how can we help you achieve that? And lots of people don't think about that question unless it's asked of them, because they just think that their life will just continue in the way that they know, but they haven't thought about the next step, because they're just, often when they come to us in their crisis, and they're often thinking, well, how can I just get past this next part of my milestone, without sort of thinking about the future? And that's about having that, that's why we have those strength-based conversations about encouraging those talks. And just while we're talking about the people's voice, and I think this is where it's really important that we have people like Health Watch doing what they do, because it's key of delivering services and improving services is the people's voice. We can't improve unless we understand what services we're doing and how they are affecting people and what they, and the outcomes that they bring.
Okay, thank you. I've got Nick, Mike, and then Andy in that order.
Thank you. And just following on from Becky's point, just wanted to read you a couple of quotes from the actual audit of, you know, those 50 young people, because we didn't ask the staff to do this, but they, well, they just captured beautifully on the spreadsheet their exact summary thoughts of the audit. And these are direct quotes, and they weren't the allocated workers, so they had no vested interest of finding that it was a good piece of work or not. But, so one here, I've got direct work with Jay, the person, setting realistic goals, voice being heard throughout the assessment, very person-centered, strong assessment, assessment for the carer, OT referral completed. So you can see the voice of the person, and it was a key thing that we asked the team to look out for, to what extent is the voice of the person coming through, and to what extent is the family having to tell their story more than once. Another one, very person-centered, empowering, promotes independence, educational offer up to date, supportive of family in terms of carers' assessment, and reasonable adjustments for mum. So we did have some really good examples, and it was always when the voice of the person was captured.
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you, Chair. Again, I'm going to come back to the annual review for children with education, health and care plans. Section A, the very first part of that is, what are my dreams and aspirations? What do I want to do when I grow up? What do I want to be, and how can you help me get there? So, you know, that is captured in the annual review. Strategically, we held a co-production session recently, looking forward at what this is going to look like going forward for all of our young children, children and young people, I beg your pardon. And we heard very powerful testimony from young people's advocates on the neurodivergent pathway, from another local authority that we are seeking to replicate here as we move forward. So those advocates will be able to capture the lived experiences and voice of the children and young people to influence our decision-making going forward. Again, in the inclusion and SEND space, we have regular children and young people experience sections in our SEND improvement board, where they speak to us about their lives, what they want, where they would like to go. And also on our inclusion school visits, there's always the mandate on the return, how many children did you speak to, did you capture their voice, and how does that get implemented into our strategic plan moving forward?
Thank you. Andy?
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Robinson, for reminding us why it's so important to base our decision-making on what people's experiences are, and in this case, young people. There are some outstanding voluntary community sector organisations in the county, like volunteering matters for YP, Level 2. None of them would be successful if young people didn't flock to them, and the reason they flock to them is because they do what the young people need. So if you're going to learn from anywhere, I would say, learn from those organisations. And for the transition team, I would highly recommend a visit to Level 2, because they work with the young people that you're looking at, and they see them through and their families from a very young age all the way through into adulthood. And the young adults stay with them and volunteer with them because of the experience that they've had with that organisation. So I really count on it's that. The other thing is that the county council, as for many, many years, had a children and people's engagement hub, which you continue to do. And I wonder whether or not that engagement hub could be extended for into adult social care as well?
Yep. Sorry, I could also add, the education settings are required to deliver independent careers, education, advice and guidance, which is monitored through Ofsted visits as well, and it's a legal requirement that involves them not just to talk about their own sex form or job opportunities, but other sex forms, colleges or university technical colleges within the area. Okay, thank you. Councillor Lever, you've got a question or comment?
Yep, thanks for the invite today. I've spent most of the time here scribbling down some sort of questions, then crossing off as other members answer them. So that's brilliant news, that means I don't have to prattle on for ages, doesn't it? But I do still have a couple of questions, if I may. But before I start, I just wanted to kind of clarify something, which will then lead on to my question. So the annual reviews at age 14, year nine, are already taking place and have that conversation around preparing for adulthood. Is it the kind of plan to then bring in the adult social care referral thing at that centre? That's not actually happening strictly right now, am I correct? There's lots of nods from over there. Okay, so that can bring me to my question, which is kind of a two-part on that. Firstly, just around kind of the timeliness of these reviews, I don't have any information to hand, are they able right now to be happening, you know, in a timely manner, you know, within the timeframes we want? I know we've had obviously challenges within EHCPs, various parts of it, in timings. And then if I just add the other bits, bolt the other bits on to that, so do you maybe foresee any possible impacts on that timeliness if there's another professional being involved? And then also, what is the process around kind of deciding whether that referral person is being referred? Is that done in the annual reviews at age 12 and 13 to actually go, oh, we need to bring in adult social care in the year nine review? Just a bit more clarity around that, if I may. Thank you.
Thanks for that, councillor Lever. The annual review is legally required to take place every year following the issue of an EHC plan. If I can talk through the process, the local authority inform the school, this is the timeframe. The school then have the responsibility to arrange that annual review, inviting stakeholders. Now, this isn't consistent, and we are working with our education partners to ensure that we get a stronger return rate on education, health and care plan annual reviews. At the moment, there is strain in the system for all partners to attend the annual review, so at the moment, the triage is taking place for the most vulnerable children who have an EHC plan. And as we move in to bringing adult social care and the transition team into that transition place, I think we're going to have to have some real conversations about that joined-up thinking, because if the annual review caseworker attends the annual review, but could they do it with the support and briefing from the transitions team, so that they're able to give that real clarity of expertise? I mean, we're still working on it, because we're working down our most vulnerable and oldest children at the moment, but I'm thinking that would be the aspiration.
Okay, yeah, thank you. That just ties in again, then, I guess, into my next kind of question around, we've already covered this quite a lot, but this single point of contact, which I think, you know, is obviously a really positive thing for lots of people. We said about the quick wins of being able to give people access to each other's systems. So obviously, I think that's very important, that this single point of contact has this access. I think that's really key to enabling this all to happen smoothly. So that's obviously, we've said about the quick wins. So my question is just, again, about quick wins. It's on the early headlines there. We've spoken about a few, I'm sure, today, but I just wondered if you, opposite there, had any more, it just says some quick wins possible, and if you had any more that quick wins that you wanted to kind of highlight to us that are possible? Thank you.
Well, an obvious quick win, so long as we can find the solution property-wise, would be to sit the right people together, because you achieve so much by having colocation and sitting in the right, sitting in the same room, sharing information. Another quick win would be the sharing of systems. You know, they would be the obvious two. I mean, because the work is quite hot off the press, we've only, it only really feels like we've just had the workshops, they were a couple of weeks ago, we're still digesting the findings, there was a lot of rich information. There will be others. I mean, I would like to say that we, you know, bring the age forward sooner, but that requires really careful capacity planning. And I think it's really important that we don't overpromise and then fall down, because we've got to get this right, and we'd rather get it right the first time than go around in circles.
Yeah, we do want to get it right first time, and I agree that with adults, that we do need to manage it carefully. And I'm also aware that there are some joint working training which is being established so that we can share knowledge. So, you know, the statutory services team are sharing the legal requirements and what's within an EHC plan with adults, because it does go up to 25. And it is that beginning to bridge the gap together for it. I do agree, I think a quick win would be seating them together for those informal, over-the-desk conversations. And I also think that another quick win would be for us to demonstrate that our partners are coming around the table for the annual review in that space. Okay, thank you. Touched on some of our recommendations there, I think, probably, but thank you for your comments, councillor Lever. We've just been going two hours now, so I've got two more, I've got councillor Chen, so then councillor Bird, and then I think I'm going to draw a line under it then, so.
Can I just say, Chair, with respect, that it's very kind that you let people observe and ask questions, but we need to exhaust our questions first before they come in, I think, in case we run out of time. So I hope you take that with the way I mean it to be, which is for us on scrutiny who read the papers. Anyway, that leads me to my next point. For the first time ever, I think I missed the pre-meeting because of holiday, but there were some really good questions that came out of that. So I was double-checking that all of them had been covered, and actually councillor Reader picked up on the one that I was going to ask, which was about capacity. However, the one thing I have observed from this session, because it's so complex, and I think you're all doing a brilliant job, and Nicola did a really good job at the beginning to stress what we should be concentrating on here. So I think a lesson learnt for me here is, because it's so complex and we had so many questions, that actually, that report that was 2022, for me, feels too long ago. We seem to have done this a bit of early, because the deep dive would have given us more up-to-date information, and then our questions wouldn't have been something that you're already doing. We might have been able to fill in some of the gaps. So I don't know what part of recommendations that would be about coming back again or learning lessons, but what would have been useful on this occasion is for, this was the report in 2022, really important, because we learned a lot of lessons, and this is what we've done because of the report, and listed them out separately. And then I could have looked at that and gone, don't need to ask that, don't need to ask that. We asked a lot of questions of things that you're already improving. And the other thing that I observed is how much data means absolutely nothing without the context. And so many people were asking about the increase in referrals, and I just want to comfort a couple of people, because I think I know what they were getting at, I'm not sure, but I think they would like to know that you know the reasons why there is that increase, you're just not sitting there going, well, 20% is this and 10% is that, that if you had time to look at that, you would have the answers. I think I'm right in thinking that, that you want to actually, thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Great.
Great. So I would like you to reassure them that you know what, specifically what that is.
But I don't still really know the answer to my question.
Right, so that's their opportunity.
Councillor Fleming, I think the question was a good question. But I think the answer is not just one single bullet, is not just one. Yeah, and I think earlier in scrutiny committee, we did explore a number of the variables. I think there would need to be further analysis, which we can do as part of following up on the details that we already have from the workshop. But certainly a good flavour of a number of the potential considerations were flagged earlier in the meeting. But I think probably some more work on the evidence base would be prudent, particularly because of the point that Nicola made earlier on about not getting carried away with anecdotes, but actually really getting under the skin, if you like, of the evidence that we have. And certainly the workshop has given us a very good platform upon which to do that further analysis.
Okay, councillor Bird, last word.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to expand on the point councillor Robinson made, very valid point about neurodiverse individuals having an aspirational approach and achieving their potential. I read a statistic some weeks ago, I forget, I don't recall the source, but it shocked me quite a lot. It said that only 29% of autistic adults in Britain are in any kind of employment. I wonder if any of you can comment on that. Is that figure broadly accurate? Do you have an equivalent figure for Suffolk?
I don't have knowledge of the number of people who are autistic in Suffolk that are in employment. I mean, that's, that's a shockingly low figure, isn't it? I think for me, it's what we do about it. And again, finding routes into employment is going to be a key aspect of the wider preparing for adulthood model and, you know, transitions into adult social care. So that will be, I know for sure, it will be a firm line on our improvement plan.
Just quickly come back in. I recall now why I looked it up. I was actually speaking to somebody who has an autistic son and on the issue of worrying what's going to happen when he leaves school, will he get work? So I looked at it. I appreciate when you look things up online, you don't always know the veracity of the figures and how accurate they are. So I do give it that caveat. But yes, I was shocked. 29% of autistic adults in any form of employment.
I think we're just picking up the point, sorry, was the point around our NHS partners being in the room as part of this. Because I think there's an obvious link around diagnosis rates. So the number might seem really low, because we've not actually captured everybody who needs a diagnosis of autism. So we're aware of a number of people in later life who are getting their diagnosis, who have been in employment for numbers and numbers of years. So that number might be skewed, because we're not getting as many adults going through that diagnostic pathway and getting a diagnosis of autism.
So if I speak with my Chair of the Adult Learning Services Board, I think they actually could be, we could have had a room full of people, couldn't we, as witnesses as such? But they are really, a really key link as well, that sort of post-16 move and adulthood. And I was at the Learning Services Awards a couple of weeks back. And there were people with some real challenges with regards to anxiety, diagnosis, had left school, no qualifications, or hadn't even attended school in some cases, who are then able to access a pathway for them, which is right for them at their time, and achieved their ambitions and achieved going into work or another pathway through. So that they are a really, there's lots of work going out there. And I don't think we talk enough about it, actually, about the work that our adult learning services and our colleges and people like the Green Light Trust, Realised Futures Leading Lives do, and the voluntary sector do, to help encourage people to gain and go into employment and gain that education as well. So that might be another idea for scrutiny, Mr Chairman.
Yeah, just thinking about the cohort of children, excepting what I've already also said, the cohort of children or young people that have a plan for that diagnosis. In our preparation for adulthood work, more generally, we can look at where are the onward destinations for those young people, what's actually happening here in this local place, including those, their feelings, et cetera. So it's not something we've got to, but it is something we could absolutely explore and understand. And I think we can do that in part of our work stream we've got around preparation for adulthood and onward destinations for our young people.
Okay, thank you very much. So I think we're just coming to the end of that. So thank you all very much for attending this morning. It's a very, very difficult and complex topic, which I think you've explained very well. I think we've got some good things out of that, better understanding of the interface between the children and adult services. It seems to me that early intervention is always going to be a key issue. So I think we're going to take a 10-minute break now. We'll come back then to discuss our recommendations. Councillor Chensey, your point has been noted. I will just say that everyone has had a good question, or two, or three, and actually, we're dead on time. So thank you for that.
You're very kind.
So be back at 25 past if we can. Officers, obviously, we realise you've got other jobs to do. But we'd encourage some of the lead officers to stay for our recommendations if you're able to. But obviously, if you're not, that's fine. Thank you very much for attending this morning. Right, thank you very much. Thank you for coming back. Order please, order please. Thank you. Thank you for coming back on time. We're missing councillor Bird. But we're going to move on if we can, because we're getting short of time. So we've got recommendations to look at. I'll go through what Catherine and I have sort of captured during the morning. You can then add, amend as we go. Hello, laptop's just gone off. Which has been timed out, I think. So I think, as I said before the break, it's a very complex topic. It was probably the most difficult one for us to scoop, I think, because of the transition between education, children's services into adult social care. But hopefully we've done that justice today. Just a couple of comments first. I think we accept that the world is changing and services are evolving quite rapidly. I think this committee needs to be confident that the services are appropriate and going in the right direction, in the right place. And we accept that working smarter based on real-time evidence is probably one of the most important things to do. I think we are pleased at the way ASC and CYP colleagues are working together as a transitions team and encourage them to develop closer links with other stakeholders, such as health partners, I think that came out from all towards the end. And all organisations need to work more closely together. I would quite like to see the evaluation of the new process and I think we might ask that to come back at some time in the future because there is a new process and system in place, I hope, from autumn. We'd like to report back on progress. We want to ensure that the ASC staff are invited to key assessments as the child approaches adulthood. CYP, ASC and Families Health and other stakeholders need to get together as early as possible. Again, I think the view was early intervention is really, really important. The earlier that happens, the better chance and probably less is needed further down the line. Transition staff should have access to both CYP and ASC system databases. We consider physical co-location of transition teams. I think you raised that, you know, if you're working together, it's easier to sort of join up rather than if you're in separate areas. I'd like to see developing training for transition team staff to ensure that all staff are aware of the way in which both directorates work and the legislation structures governing the services provided by CYP and ASC. Couple more, review the information, advice and guidance provided by the council to ensure it is sufficient to mitigate some of the anticipated increases in demand and continue to work with young people and partner organisations to develop effective and accessible social prescribing models. That's what we've captured through this sort of discussion this morning. Members, any additions or amendments or comments? Yes, councillor Scarf?
Thank you, Chair. I mean, I think what came out this morning was the difference between the Health Watch and our ongoing review and vastly different. And there are some reasons that we've heard today about that. But I think we should welcome as a committee the contribution that Health Watch made, in particular, in setting off probably this process that we're now looking at today. And I wonder, I know we can't mandate another organisation to look at something else, but I wonder if we could ask Health Watch if they would consider, when the time is right, to re-look at what we've now looked at today and once the review has bedded in. Because I think that would be a very useful process. I think Health Watch's contribution, not only today, but in other arenas and other areas which have been looked at by the council, has been very useful. So I think that, you know, recognition and ask them that they be prepared to do so again.
Yes, yes, thank you for that. I think when we scooped this, it was, we debated whether we should have Health Watch. I felt that was important, we did have them. You have to keep in context, I think that what they've done was three years ago and was very small numbers, but nevertheless, as you said, probably kick-started the process. And it was taken into account on the assessment. So I think they have played an important part, but I think we just need to keep that in context a bit. But yes, I think I would quite like to see another piece of work done in a year or two's time to see how things have improved from that three years ago. So we'll put that in the recommendations, thank you. Okay, councillor Mason and councillor Reader?
Okay, yeah. When I spoke, I certainly praised the work of adult social care and children's services and I meant that sincerely. But if we've got 44% that aren't quite making it, I'm sure we could have found some case studies that were equally as enlightening as the Health Watch even now. So I think it is a case of where you choose your case studies. And the case studies that you gave us were to demonstrate what works well. And obviously, Health Watch goes out there and asks everybody and the people who will get will be the ones that are, which we could have found, I suggest, if we wanted to do it in that direction. So I'm not quite sure that whilst Health Watch's report is three years, two years out, three years out, I'm sure that they could have still found some even if they did it today. And thank you Nicola for nodding, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. An awful lot of information and a lot of questions to try and absorb during the day. I'm still not entirely sure that we are necessarily avoiding a repetition of our young people reflecting on their transition process and still not necessarily being positive. And my thoughts were about how well are we engaging them with ownership of, well, this is what we've discussed and this is what we've planned, this has happened, this has happened. And so they are knowledgeable about their own transition and they're able to talk about their own transition and don't fall into the trap of being able to answer really quite easily and quite quickly something a little bit offhand because perhaps things haven't quite gone their way, which may not necessarily be any fault of any support that they've received. Do you understand what I'm trying to say? So I think my recommendation is something about, is to review the preparedness for young people going through transition to ensure that they're knowledgeable about what they are going through and are able to talk back about what has happened, what is coming ahead and what's happened. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, we've got a recommendation around working with young people to develop effective and accessible social prescribing models. We could add that into there, I think, that's probably the best place.
In education, we call it metacognition. It's about students understanding their own learning journey and being able to talk about their own learning journey. And I think there's something regarding metacognition about these young people going through their own transition where we need to tool them into understanding, looking back about actually loads of things have happened positively.
Yeah, it's involving them, but I think what I picked up today is about decisions, but it's about making informed decisions, you know, if you've got the information, you can make a better decision than if you haven't. So I think if you're happy, we'll wrap that into that sort of, into that recommendation. I mean, we'll send these all out to you anyway in the next day or two so you can sort of see if that fits what you want. If not, you know, send through some amendments, but thank you for that. You'll wrap that into that last recommendation. Councillor Chancy?
There's something about the seamless transition, what does that look like? So for us to be able to measure improved seamless transition, we seem to really need to know exactly what it looks like. So there's something there about recommendation if that could be done. But the other thing is, I always hope that scrutiny helps inform the witnesses as much as the other way around as we get towards the end. So this is my coach within me is saying to the ones that have bothered to stay here, thank you. Is there anything that came out for you that you think, actually, it might cause us a bit more work, but it would be a good recommendation for us to put in there?
I think the point that was most testing, but a good test, not a bad test, was about understanding the reasons for increasing demand. So I do, as I said during committee, I do believe there is further analysis to be undertaken and I think that was a good question in order to provide us with the opportunity to look at it, absolutely.
Would you like them to report back in six months or nine months on that particular one? I mean, yeah.
I would love them to come back again, you know, every year after then.
Well, we might not be here, of course, but. Okay, we'll put that in there, so yes, someone else had to hand it up, I think. Sorry, Jessica, yeah?
Thank you, I'm just wondering if it wouldn't be helpful for more communications with the SEND Improvement Board and the work that's being done? I'm not sure what members of the CYP and ACS Transition Team sit on that board. I was just trying to look actually at the list of members to see who's on it, who would, you know, representing your viewpoints. I mean, Nicola, you're not on it, are you?
I'm a member of the SEND Committee, I think, and Gareth is a member of the Improvement Board.
You're a member of the Improvement Board, yeah, okay. Yeah, because I think, having been on the Improvement Board for a while myself, I think that there's so much going on there that is relevant to what we've talked about today. That, you know, it's not just a talking shop, you know, the important things are discussed there and suggestions made and it'd be nice to know that, you know, this real, you know, building on those things, that it's an opportunity for improvement. Well, I think, that's my recommendation.
I was just going to say, is that a recommendation?
Maybe there isn't one, really. You know, greater participation in the recommendations coming from the Improvement Board. You know, noting of recommendations coming from the Improvement Board. Something like that.
We've captured that, so we'll add something in that to recommendations. We'll word something which, again, we'll send out to you, see if you're happy with it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anyone else? If not, I think we're probably about there. So yes, thank you very much. So again, thank you all for attending this morning. We've got two or three other items to do, but obviously you're free to go, as it were. Thank you, thank you. So we just got agenda item seven, which is information bulletins on page 51. You've got them there. I thought the interesting one was about the dragon patcher. That seems to be very successful so far. So hopefully that will continue to be so. Any other comments? I mean, we don't discuss these, as you know. What, before I just said that or before? I said the dragon patcher, looked as though that's pretty successful and long may it be so. Obviously, we don't have discussions on these, but if there's any comments, we're happy to take them. Sorry, just councillor Scarf a minute, but the only comment I've made was, I think, as I mentioned at the pre-meeting, was about that communication of the highways thingy, wasn't it? No, the environmental thing, wasn't it? Yeah, that's right, that's right. Yes, councillor Scarf?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'm fairly certain that the vehicle's visited the market, but I've not actually seen it. But I was quite interested in what meets the criteria for an intervention in terms of, it's not a pothole, so it's a rutting of a road, for example. I've got one road where the road has been half-done and the balance of the road hasn't been done, yet the balance of the road is worse than the bit that has been done. So what meets the criteria in order for the dragon patcher to attend? I've spoken to my local highways officer and actually, they're now pricing up for me to pay for my highways budget for the balance of the road to be done. So I was quite interested in what is the criteria? Because obviously, this is an intervention where dragon patcher and roadmen to go out and do work that doesn't meet the criteria but prevents further potholes. So I think it would be useful to have some more information about that. I don't know how we get that.
This is a bugbear. I had a meeting, an hour meeting yesterday with one of my parishers who said all they keep getting when they report something I'm reporting to is it doesn't meet the criteria. And they keep asking what is the criteria? Well, I've asked that question and the officers say, well, it's all on the website, which it is, but you've got three days to go and look at it. I'm just wondering if this is anything the task and finish group might touch on? Councillor Reader, do you think? It's because it's looking at highways issues, isn't it? TROs, yeah. Could you expand it a little bit?
If it's helpful, councillor Scarf, a pothole has to be both 40 millimetres deep and at least 200 millimetres at its widest cross-dimensional width.
Yeah, that's it, there we are, from the expert.
That's very useful, I did know that. But what I was interested in is why is one part of a road that is worse than the part of the road that has had intervention by this machine? How do they prioritise it? Because now, it doesn't meet the criteria, it's been re-reported by my highways officer, in fact. It doesn't meet the criteria, I've had an instant response, doesn't meet the criteria. So I'd just really like to know the semantics of what, how do they assess what is? Because presumably, they must assess it by a vehicle travelling over and doing a slow survey. So why did it, why did it? I know it's very parochial, but I think it's a general issue which we all have.
I certainly don't want to get sucked into highways scrutiny at this stage, but I'm just wondering if councillor Reader, if you could just, your task and finish group could just expand on that a little bit? I mean, if you can't, don't, but I'm sure we'll have highways back in at some point in the future anyway. So save that question for then. Oh, yes, yes, they are, obviously, they're here at the council meeting tomorrow, aren't they? So perhaps you will call one of them there. Okay, very good, let's move on then, shall we? So we've got item eight, key decision forward plan and the scrutiny forward work programmes. Just mentioned the task and finish group, which we hope might come back, report back. September meeting, is that sort of realistic? Councillor Reader, was you're chairing that meeting? Yep, okay. Excellent, thank you very much. So we've got the next, we've got a reserved date on 31st of July. We probably won't need that, that's obviously for calling purposes, I say we don't need it, but we might do. The next forum meeting is on the 25th of September, where we'll be considering the fire service inspection action plan, which will be very interesting, I think. I've also requested an information bulletin on the progress with the inmundum developments for the November meeting, because I sit on the joint venture board and we've actually got in Newmarket, there are some, the first site is being built and they're up to about sort of floor level. So I thought it'd be quite good to have an update on that coming back as there seems to be some action there since the last time that was looked at. I'd have to declare an interest on that particular item, I think, so councillor Scarf would have to take that IB. And the agenda for the meeting on 20th of November still needs to be finalised. We've talked about, remember when libraries changed on the 1st of June? I think we sort of said we'd look at that transition, if you like, at a future date. So we're having a scooping meeting, I think, in the next couple of weeks, yeah? So we'll look at the scooping of that and see whether we can bring that to the November, November meeting, if you're okay with that. And we have ACS, which came up a bit this morning, accommodation strategy, which came up. We probably might look at that as well, but we'll give that some consideration. We did have NSIPS, but the feeling is, when we're speaking to officers, there's not much change on NSIPS at the moment. We've done that, I think, over a year or so ago and there doesn't seem to be much change or progress. So we're wondering whether we really need to look at that yet. We might hold that back for a later, later time. So there seems more urgent pressing things like libraries and the fire service and the ASC accommodation strategy. So if you're happy with that, yes, councillor Scarf?
Can I just bring up one of the potential future scrutiny items, which we haven't actually timetableled yet? But I feel actually, we did a review of the continuity of council services, et cetera, IT hacking and that kind of thing. But I don't know about other members, but I feel this is really important when you consider the number of commercial organisations. when you consider the number of commercial organisations that have actually got hacked recently and the disruption that it has caused to them operating and cost them many hundreds of millions of pounds. And when you think about the disruption it would cost us in terms of if we had disruption to ACS and CYP systems. It was added 28th of September 23, and I wonder if we can try and pencil that in as soon as possible? Because I think an update on that would be useful. It doesn't necessarily need to be a large topic.
Do you think that's a full scrutiny or would that be an information bulletin to start with?
Possibly an information bulletin.
To start with and then we'll see.
Yeah, and then just see what flows from that. Because I think it's more relevant, even more relevant now than it was when we looked at it last time.
Yeah, well, we were ahead of our time, actually. We looked at cyber security just before everything sort of went. I was talking to a staff member of Marks and Spencer's last week and they said, that was horrendous. They've actually got to categorise every single item again they sell in their stores, which is massive, you know, so it's really knocked them for six completely, you know. So yes, we can probably see if we can get an information bulletin to start with, probably September or November, we'll see. Because he's left now, hasn't he? Krishna, yeah, the guy who came and presented that to us, yeah. Hope that's not, you know. He's got the Marks and Spencer's, probably. Right, okay, so really just confirm then, the meeting, next meeting 25th of September? And if you're all okay, I'll formally close the meeting. Great, thank you very much.